I don't remember talking.
It was very, very brief.
I wonder if that's the one or two. Two and six later. On the time which was right from the. Right. Oh. Those were the letters. They're still there, I heard. Yeah. Those are still there. Here. Through audio, no. In turn. Take one.
We'll get back, okay.
You can't go.
Five rings at all. We reached out, we reached out to emails on the phone. They'll mail them. There's our calls here. We'll relax up. Can't get in, can't change the water. Four inch, you know, falls a hole. So much, not have to, not.
Mark, can you please tell me what you have in your paper?
Oh, I bet.
Um.
So do you want me to send it to you?
We shut so, yeah, I got to leave it in my.
Your, your four cylinder rivers.
The one.
To the little one would be big wood.
The last.
Right. That ain't the case. Yeah. They need a, they need a whole. We'll go to the end.
I was just gonna say.
What's your signature? Is there a proclamation, Michael, to read?
Yes.
No. How long did you hear you have this? Really? We should just have that at the first place.
Oh. Okay, I just sent up to you, Chris.
Okay. Are you gonna give it to me, speak for me?
Um, no, you're gonna say nothing.
Okay, so, please send up the code.
Yeah, I did. I just did it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Whatever.
Well, maybe this meeting will all be over here and we'll hear this all. Call me if it works. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Consent agenda four through eight. Anything pulled? Anything wanted to be talked about?
Some.
Second.
Motion to second to approve consent agenda four through eight. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Public comments. Public comments are limited to two minutes per person. Anybody with public comments? Go to the podium and state your name.
Really?
Yep.
All right, well, that's gonna be put on the agenda, but we don't think we need to, but Angie Chandler. So I just wanted to take a moment to share some incredible opportunity that you might have missed. It was tucked away on page seven of the bulletin, but it likely deserves first, um, the front page of attention. So this is a once in a lifetime opportunity, not just for Windmill Days, but for the Baldwin community. Our cherished hometown festival has been named a top five finalist in the National Senics Hometown Throwdown, putting us in the running for a hundred thousand dollar grand prize. The recognition puts Baldwin on the national map and gives us a real shot at securing the long-term future of not only Windmill Days, but also help funding improvements that will benefit our community well beyond our festival weekend. Um, it all started when my husband saw a TV ad and encouraged me to check it out. I teamed up with another committee member and together we submitted a 250-word essay and a short video showcasing the heart of our festival and the amazing people who make Baldwin so special. A month later, we were selected for a virtual interview. We set the stage with a backdrop full of Windmill Days gear and Baldwin gear, tulips, shoes, you name it. Um, we shared our story, we gave it our all, and just a few days later, we got the incredible news that we were a top five finalist. So we come today because we need your help. Um, from now until the end of May, we need every person to help Windmill Days win. You can only vote once per person, but if we're chosen as the winner, we can win up, win a hundred thousand dollars. And this will not only help our festival grow and thrive, it would also support lots of community projects, and we'd like to partnership with the village on that. Um, for us, this is more than just about the weekend, it's about Baldwin's future. So, um, every vote truly makes a difference. Um, and don't worry, then don't spam your inbox. Um, so with your vote, we can show the nation the strength of our hometown pride and hopefully win this. If we come in dead last, we still win five thousand dollars. So, and I think it's twenty, fifteen, ten, five, but we want a hundred thousand, so, um. But if anybody has any questions, they can reach out to any Windmill Days committee member, and most importantly, if you have not voted, please do so and help us spread the word.
Just a note, Angie.
Hmm?
You said one per person, but it's one per email address?
Oh, is it? Well, thank you.
Just for those that haven't voted yet, I have four emails.
Thank you.
You guys can't talk.
Can't say that.
I know, I shouldn't have taken time on the jealousy, could talk, but.
I don't wanna see the smoke coming out of the lawyer's ears here.
So anyways, but thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Want to have the website or?
Any more public comments? One last time, public comments. All right, move on. Number ten, Reclamation of Municipal Clerk's Appreciation Week. I love reading this. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government and election administration, is critical to the endurance and prosperity of the state. And whereas Wisconsin's eighteen hundred and fifty professional municipal clerks and seventy-two county clerks consistently display courage, flexibility, and resilience, and pledge to be faithful and impartial in handling their official duties, upholding transparency and neutrality by rendering equal service to all. And whereas, among their many vital responsibilities, professional municipal clerks serve as the official record keepers of their respective municipalities, the legislative historian of their community, and the direct link between residents and their government to ensure transparency and communication between the governing bodies and the communities they serve. Whereas professional municipal clerks also provide essential support in the administration of elections, often preparing ballots, training election officials, tabulating and certifying election results, and dedicated themselves to conducting open, accurate, and fair elections in Wisconsin. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually approve the administration of the responsibilities of their office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, focus groups, and annual conferences across Wisconsin. And whereas this week, the state of Wisconsin joins all Wisconsinites in recognizing and thanking professional municipal clerks for the important work they do for communities across the state. Now therefore, not myself, but Tony Evers, governor of the state of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim, May fourth through the tenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Appreciation Week throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I commend observance to all our state presidents.
Red was, uh.
We could have dug back and used it down. Oh my god. Ever proclamation, can we have him come back and read it? Eleven, update on police department building renovations. Paige Sullivan.
All right, hello, good evening. Um, I think we've got the presentation pulled up here.
So there's the.
Yeah, we'll start with the presentation here. Um, so just quick agenda, what we're gonna go through. Um, we've got a project milestone update for everyone, um, a current status report. Um, we're gonna review those alternates we talked about at our last meeting, last time we were here. Um, and then we have a nice image to show you all tonight, and then I also have materials that are gonna be on the inside of the building. We put together a materials board. Um, and I realize I just left that in my car, so I'll bring it back in and just put it against the wall here after I've done presenting, but that's for, um, the village to keep. Um, so that's something else that we have today. Um, but if you wanna go to the next slide mark, um, so our project milestone update, we've been showing this kind of throughout the whole process, but now we're at the exciting point where we're kind of able to put concrete dates under that whole bidding phase that you see there. Um, so we are slated to, um, bid this project in June, so we're just finishing up construction documents this month. Um, we have earmarked June seventh for our bid day. Um, with an addendum period, so any miscellaneous contractor questions, things like that, um, will occur in the couple of weeks after that bid day. Um, we are planning to do a contractor walkthrough as, as well. Um, typically, we make those optional. Um, years ago, they used to kind of be mandatory, but in the recent years, we've seen optionals better. But, um, it's really good for existing buildings because it gives contractors the opportunity to come in and see everything beforehand. Um, so they're able to give good, accurate bids on bid day. Um, so we are planning that contractor walkthrough for June seventeenth. Um, and then we are looking to bid the project, um, on June twenty-sixth. And then, uh, construction would go from August to December. So our status report, um, as we discussed at last month's board meeting, um, we have now taken that DNR cold, cold storage building out of the project. Um, and we've been working to get quotes on that, so I do have the next slide will show some quotes, but, um, so we, we took that out. Uh, the PD garage is now alternate one, so we'll bid that as alternate one. Um, and then all the renovation work is included in the base bid, along with all the site work is included in the base bid. Um, and we did send an estimate set to our estimator, uh, third-party estimator on May ninth. Um, so we are expecting probably two to three-week turnaround on that. Um, so potentially next month, uh, early next month, uh, we should have a CDS estimate to share with you all. Uh, so as I mentioned, we did reach out to three, uh, manufactured building, uh, contractors. We reached out to Cleary, Meyer, and Morton. Um, Cleary and Meyer, they're are pretty close, sixty-seven thousand and fifty-seven thousand. Um, and Morton is a little higher at one hundred and three, but I will say Morton's has the concrete slab included in their number, and Cleary and, um, Meyer do not, so Cleary and Meyer would have to go up probably, you know, to get pretty close to that hundred and three thousand dollar number for the, for the concrete slab. I also wanna note that none of these numbers include the electrical work or any of the site work around the building. Um, so that would all have to be outside of this scope because they don't do any of that. Um, so that brings me to one item that, um, we've, I brought up to Mark yesterday, but I think we're gonna wanna kind of kick it around maybe with the attorney here at some point, but just how we wanna go about, um, moving forward with the building. Uh, we could put it into the construction package as like a delegated design. Uh, so that means that every contractor bidding on the project would then, you know, be required to go to, let's say we pick Meyer. They'd be required to go to Meyer and get that number from Meyer and include it in their drawings. So that way then, everything is managed under one contractor. If we do that way though, then there will be the contractor markup. Um, so that's just something to think about. The one benefit would be that it's all, you know, under one contractor, and the contractor, um, who builds the whole project will have that under their scope. Um, but it does add a little bit of cost, so that's one option. Or we can just, you know, have you guys go direct to one of these contractors, um, and then we have the site work and everything as part of the construction package. I don't wanna get too far into it today, um, but we'll have some more discussions on that, I think. Um, but we wanted to just share with you that we came in much lower than a four hundred and fifty thousand that was presented, um, a month or so ago. So, we're feeling good about that. Um, so then, uh, we just have the site plan again. Um, only thing that has really changed here, if y'all note, we are, we have pulled the DNR garage away from the existing building. Um, and that is, again, it's gonna be more economical to build it as a standalone than to build it connected to the existing building. Um, so there will be some, um, discussions on the variance, like I mentioned, um, last month, so that still has to be worked through. Um, but other than that, this would be, um, the alternate with the PD garage there in, uh, dark gray. And then the next slide shows the, the inside of the building, so with the alternate here, um, we've got, again, as a reminder to everyone, um, the existing building here to the left-hand side of the screen. Uh, our main entrance to the police station, we've got our police offices, um, administration patrol area, an evidence area, a locker room, and then our garage space. And then everything to the right in yellow is our, the DNR, um, portion. Uh, all the work that's really going on over there is just, uh, making kind of a larger office and conference room for them. So if you go to the next slide then, oh, I will say too, in the garage, sorry, Mark. Um, in the garage, uh, we do have the, uh, a mudroom for the patrol officers to store their gear, um, an armory space, and then some nice storage space for them as well. Um, and then this image here would be, uh, the base bid project, so this is without the PD garage. Um, so really, the only changes to this, obviously, we cut off that PD garage and now there's just a door leading to the outside on the south half of the building there. Um, and then we've kind of rearranged and put, uh, the locker room now. We lose just a few lockers and put some of the, um, the mudroom items in that locker room area. Uh, but really, everything else pretty much stays the same.
Why did we do that?
That is, in case you don't choose to proceed with the police garage, this is what it would look like if we don't go with the police garage. And so this is our image. This is what we're gonna see, uh, as we drive down, uh, past the building now. So, um, we're really keeping with the same materials, trying to make it look as natural as possible of an addition. Um, the existing siding is like a fiber cement siding, it's got a wood tone to it, wood look to it. Um, so we're continuing that all the way around, and then continuing the brown asphalt, uh, shingles all the way around as well.
Mike, do you wanna look at it?
I sure do.
Yeah. You can come and find the difference here for just a second, too, if you wanna sit by Jody for a little bit, but.
So is that the main entrance right now, as it exists?
It is, yep. Yep, we're not changing anything over there. All we're touching is that garage addition there.
It's kinda drive-through garage, is that what I understand?
It is, yep.
And then that would, if you went through those doors, the main part of the DNR building would be off to your left?
Yes, yep, if you go through, um, all the way to the other side, yep.
So you won't be able to, like, on the far right, is that grass? So you're not gonna like drive around that.
Yes, you can't drive around it anymore.
So there's two entrances.
Two entrances, yeah.
Drive-in, drive-out, yep.
Sure. So it separates the DNR from the police, you know, um, access-wise. So just some signage is gonna be necessary probably, but PD is the ones who actually get public. Um, DNR doesn't really get public anymore, so. Any other questions or go back to anything?
You got some free money for me?
I wish I did. I'm looking for some too. Uh, then the only other thing I have for you, um, I think it's in your council packets, the, um, additional fees, uh, fee letter that we had sent out. So, yep. So this is really, um, based on the meeting that we had, um, a month or so ago when, you know, bids came in or estimates came in, everything was higher than kind of expected. Original, um, bid scope was eight hundred thousand. Um, you know, we were told that your budget was one million, so that means an eight hundred thousand dollar construction fee. Um, so our fixed rate for any renovation project, and this is standard for every client that we work with, is seven and a half percent, um, which got us to our sixty thousand dollar fee. Um, when, uh, estimates all came in high, you know, we took a look at everything, presented what was possible to do with that eight hundred thousand dollars, um, but it was decided that we were gonna proceed with the larger project here. Um, so we broke it out into ad alternate one with the police garage. Um, so with, at that price of seven hundred and forty-two thousand, which was what the estimate came in at, um, a seven and a half percent fee on that is fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty. And then if you go to the next page, uh, ad alternate two is the site work. At the time that we sent this to the village, the ad alternate two was not part of the base bid. Now that is part of the base bid, so that, um, four hundred and twenty thousand dollar, uh, cost there at the seven and a half percent gives us thirty-one thousand, five hundred. That will be rolled into the, the base bid amount. Um, but basically what it says is that, um, the additional fees that we're asking for are for the base bid only. The alternates will only look for fees for construction if you choose to go through with construction on those. So we're only asking for additional fees on the work of designing it at this point. Um, because then, you know, you could decide, all right, you know, we saw what the police garage is gonna take, and we decided not to do that, so then we wouldn't ask for construction fees for that.
You didn't do that pro bono for us, just to drop some cool stuff?
Um, we did, we, we.
I'm messing with you.
We can help with some things, um, but, yeah, we, we try to keep our fees as fair, you know, everyone as possible. We, we don't typically like to give deals, but if you give a deal to one person.
Everyone wants it.
Then everybody wants a deal, you know, everybody talks, so, um, it's, it's a pretty straightforward, uh, fee schedule here, but if you have any questions, let me know.
I don't have any questions. All comes on to the next agenda item to figure out where we're gonna go with this. Looks good. Glad to hear about the.
The DNR garage, yes.
That was a very pleasant email I got from Mark on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah, we were all excited about that too.
Half a million dollars for that, we're not gonna happen to.
No. No, this is much more realistic.
So we gotta make motion for the. We see this then, Mark?
Yeah, I think we need to, yeah, make a motion on this amendment in the old architecture contract.
So if we decide to do just one piece of it, we need to pay for the.
Yeah.
Drawings for the house. It's fair enough that would have.
Yeah, that's what I close. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment second.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Thank you.
Number twelve. I love this guy. Review bond financing option for built PD building in Ninth Street project. Sean Lance.
Yes, thank you, Lance. Um, I've got some hard copies of the material too. Would be easier to hand that around and see if you got it up on the screen, Mark, so that's.
I think everybody got it in packets.
Oh, we got it in packets, too?
Yeah, we got it in the packets.
Great, great. Well, uh, pinbacking on the previous presentation, we put together some preliminary, uh, projections of the impact of financing the, uh, the projects. And is, I think at the last meeting, I've talked about as well, we've got a couple of other things going on in the village this year, so we can't just look at this project, we gotta kind of look at everything all, all together. So on the page you see up on the screen right now, this is the, two things, the, the street projects that the village is proceeding with this year, as we understand Ninth, Oak, and Maple. And then, uh, we've divided those costs into the different funding sources. Where it says streets, that's generally falling on the, the tax levy, the debt levy for the village. Water would be paid by the water utility and sewer, by the sewer utility. Uh, whenever we do a financing that it contains new money, we also look and see if there's any existing debt that you don't anticipate paying off right away. Uh, the twenty-four issue that you did has a couple of years left on it, and interest rates are better than what you're paying, so we're suggesting include that in, uh, to lower the interest cost on it by refinancing it. Okay? All right, we go to the next slide. So on the, uh, the building construction, at the last meeting, you'll recall, we had a couple of different scenarios that we talked through. Uh, scenario four, it assumed the, uh, well, I shouldn't say no DNR, but DNR addition being handled differently, and you guys just went over that. Uh, so that project was taken out. Uh, and then, and the other thing I think the group will remember is when we did the borrowing a year ago to acquire the building, there was an initial budget for remodeling, so that is being applied. Uh, so we need about a million, five forty-five to cover the project, which was the building and the police garage is, is included in that as well. Now, the other things that came up, uh, in discussions since then were two other project costs. And as a starting point, we put those costs into the overall model. These costs are to be funded by the sewer water utility. One was that sledge thickener at about four hundred thousand. Uh, I will say, and I think Kim had in some emails she'd sent to me, she's working with the auditors, there is a better, the good chance that the cash balance of the sewer utility can likely absorb that cost, so we can pull it out of and not have to borrow for it. But, uh, and I applaud Kim's work on this, she's trying to be real diligent to make sure we made that choice, the cash is there, we can have access to it, it's liquid, and we can, uh, move forward. We've also included, I've got two options for you guys tonight, the water meter project. Couple variables there. Uh, don't have as much cash in the water utility like we do in the sewer to necessarily pick cash for it. But, um, I know the village is still researching if going forward with what's called a safe drinking water loan, which is through the state of Wisconsin. It has a subsidized interest rate, is a possibility. And if, again, if that is a possibility, we feel like if we get better interest rates, save some money on that, that also might ultimately be pulled out.
Okay, so Sean, this water meter thing, I thought we borrowed for the. Okay, so Sean, this water meter thing, I thought we borrowed for this.
I, I'm not.
I'm not in two million for the water towers, because we had to repaint that one, the DNR standards. We had to refurb and repaint that one, and then the eight hundred thousand dollars of all these water meters that DNR demands. I thought this, that should be taken care of, there should be monies for that. And it wasn't that part. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we got that interim financing or whatever, and then we could apply for that water.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well...
Because I keep hearing this, sorry, I'm not cutting you off real quick, but I'm hearing this, like, we should have these monies. I told Kim, I said, we should have these monies. This should have been taken care of a year ago. And now we're looking back at a three hundred and twenty thousand water meters project, like, the money should be somewhere. Come on up, Kim, you can talk all you want to.
So I'm still learning, but what I learned about that is that it's not your typical get a loan, pay for the project. It's pay out of your pocket for the project and then get financing. And the financing, they may not approve everything, the clean water loan, they might, you might spend four hundred thousand phase one and only get reimbursed for three hundred thousand of the loan. So it's this third phase of the project, we've paid for the meters, there might be, Graham might still have a few more odd sized meters coming through, but we've paid about two hundred and fifty grand for phase three. And then we go to get the financing. It's like different order.
So where do we get, where do we get this money from, anywhere?
The state.
No, the two hundred and fifty, where do we pull that money out of if we're...
Water fund.
We have that money in the water fund?
There's like kind of a...
Aren't you with, aren't you with me on this?
Right now it's the general, it's just, we have one account.
And then, and we're still figuring, I'm still...
No, and I'm not yelling at you, that's whatever.
Yeah, no, we're not yelling. So we took on a whole pile of money for all of this.
Because Sean, you were here for that.
We did, we did, I recall, we did that interim loan.
Okay.
My recollection, I'll go back and double check this, is the water stuff was broken into like three phases, and I don't think we borrowed for all three phases in that interim loan. You guys have subsequently taken out two safe drinking water loans with the state of Wisconsin and clean water fund loan. Those are the projects that paid off that interim financing. The other thing I'll tell you in talking with your auditors and Kim and Mark who are on this too, your water utility did pay cash for a lot of stuff last year, because there's that, remember that large operating expenditure and you had the auditor look at? We think that was a one-time hit to the water utility. So that, you did, I thought a lot of that was the water tower painting though, that you did, but some of the well, or some of the meters, excuse me, could be in there.
I need a reconciliation, like a, some, I hear what you're saying to me and I comprehend it, it's just not what I recall. And so I need a reconciliation because I swear we borrowed for those water towers, like, and the waters.
And it was all, it was a combined thing.
And, and so, and for the whole thing, so I remember I was grabbing about like, what? Now there's more, so we're up to like three million dollars in water meters? Do you remember ranting about this? And, yeah, okay.
Because I remember it was like eight hundred thousand dollars for the water meters, like two hundred and fifty thousand to paint that thing, and I think it was like three sixty-eight or something roughly to paint and refurb the old one.
The north tower was half a million, that was like one fifty-ish, and water meters some fifty, eight hundred, yeah. Half a million for the north, north water.
Half a million dollars.
Yep.
So that interim note, I know why I had that broken out is by what it was supposed to be for, and we can go back to the state again and talk with them about those loans that we did with state. I know a big chunk of them were related to street work and utility work underneath, but there was the two safe drinking water loans. So what we've done in here, to be as conservative as possible, is had the approach for you guys to see tonight, both with and without the three hundred and twenty in there. With the idea that, one, if it's already been handled, we don't have to deal with it, or two, if there's other funding sources than the borrowing, which is potentially another loan with the state or these other funding sources that you guys are bringing up, we can pull it out and not have it in the proposed new issue.
So we can figure this out. With you and Kim somehow we can figure out if we have to, okay. That's a, that's a big thing for me, because...
And the auditor too.
And the auditor.
We're trying to, between the three of us, to figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, do you have minutes for it? Yeah.
All right, we have found this, this whole May tenth of twenty-three. It says water sewer, water meter upgrade because of the age of the current water meters and the advanced technology and request of public work department. And Zomer moved to approve the purchase of camstruck water meters and software to be installed and upgraded over the course of three years, replacing all current meters. In twenty-three, three hundred meters will be replaced at a cost of eighty-seven-five. In twenty-twenty-four, eight hundred meters will be replaced and software upgrade will type of core handling and installation across connections at a cost of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. In twenty-twenty-five, the remaining seven hundred meters will be replaced, including commercial industrial meters with type of core handling and installation across connections at a cost of four hundred and forty-two thousand. The water utility will pay for the three meter, four meter improvements. There may be additional cost for billing software upgrades needed to handle two meter systems.
Did I read that last sentence to you, the water?
We paid for it.
There may be additional cost for billing software upgrades needed to handle two meter systems.
The sentence before that, the water account's paying for it, for all that? We had enough money in the water account? Because we have it on a borrowing schedule from Sean.
Which, which, excuse me, which presentation, or is that from twenty-three or twenty-four?
Version, I don't know.
I didn't, I probably...
What you gave us, you went...
Take a look. Okay, I was gonna leave that, but, that's...
Yeah, that's the one, yep.
Yeah, a million bucks?
Yeah, so we had, I might have to get my glasses, but, yeah, so we had those projects in here, the, the...
Water tower upgrades for...
Right, and then, where's the, here's your, on top, yep. So the total was two point five six million and three hundred and four thousand for all those projects was to come from the safe drinking water loan that we did. And then the rest of it was from a potential additional safe drinking water loan, but I don't think we did enough loan in the market, one point two million. I think we did far less than that, and that might be where the gap is on this third phase in terms of not covering everything. I think that, my recollection is that second safe drinking water loan, instead of being one point two million, was closer to six hundred thousand.
Well, that's some good news.
So what did we really borrow? Because here is about the original cost of fees on, there's water project there.
Right.
Water meters, and then there's towers, so one or two point five million, we're trying to get a loan, we're trying to get a loan.
And I remember, I remember this number here, it's one point two two.
That we're gonna get a loan?
Right. But we, something, obviously we paid for it without getting a loan, which is, I'm okay with, that's good.
What I think you might be thinking about, Lance, is what's in my mind, is we did do a loan that was around a million two. It was a general obligation note for a short period of time.
Yep.
To cover costs and then get repaid with the long-term loans.
Okay. All right, yeah, I think you're right, because that was like basically interim, whatever, we just got money quick and then we, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
And of course now the transition of Steve being on and, you know, Kim being very active with the meetings and stuff, I think we can come up, you guys can probably figure this out in...
And ensure a hundred percent that it's covered, right?
That it's covered, everything like that.
Yep.
Like, you know, I see this money here and I see one point, like, I remember one point two million, I'm like, where is this money going? Like, is, somebody stealing from me? I mean, because it's not going to my pocket.
Well, I think we can go back to the spreadsheet that, that we were just looking at. Update it with what, because that was the preliminary, put the actuals in there, update it with those actual safe drinking water loans and then get, and we can, we can work through with the auditor too, to make sure.
And we just had to make a payment, so payment was due May first, so I can get you the statement that shows all three loans. It's from the Wisconsin Department of Administration and it shows the debt and the principal and interest being paid, so.
Yeah.
Tonight after the meeting, is that okay?
Well, whatever, next week, this, this week, next week, I guess is probably fine.
I have to pay.
I just kind of want to know, you know, did we pay cash for the painting of the tower and then refurb this tower and then where?
I, I can't say specifically when you paid cash for it last year in the water utility. What I can tell you is you guys...
That's where Kim can come, yeah.
You paid a lot of cash though, because the operating costs were far higher in twenty-four and twenty-three, and what we determined the difference to, to him about a half a million bucks, I think, was one-time capital costs or potentially meters in that category.
Okay, well, at least we're paying, I mean, we used money to pay for it that we had, so. Right.
And Steve, one point two, three point, you know, three fifty, like, where's this ending?
The one other thing that we talked a little bit about too that we can double check is occasionally on those state loans, you don't necessarily have to draw all the money down at the initial closing, and I have seen some circumstances where you end up paying other funds of the village initially for something, and the second step, which is to go to the loan program and draw the money to reimburse you, doesn't always happen at the exact same time that that first outweighed money went. So we could, we can go back and see how much have we drawn in those loans, because there may be a need to do an additional if we haven't drawn up to what the total amount was included there.
Okay, well, no, I'm sure we got out of that rabbit hole, I guess, you can continue on it. Unless the board has any more questions, I'll off this quarter.
I have one more question, it's time with water, but why is the, the DNR garage addition project cost at one point five million? Why is it, that's really, I don't know that, why is that one point five?
It would be the one point five plus the eight hundred would be the total cost.
Well, what is the one million, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars? I'm not, I just don't, I don't know what that number is.
Is it the construction estimate plus walls?
Yes.
Plus local data.
Yep. Yeah, I, I should have put that in parentheses, whatever, and the eight hundred is money that we've already borrowed, the one million, five forty-five is new money we have to borrow.
I see.
Yep. But it would have all of the construction-related expenses in there as well as the hard costs that'll come in from the bidding.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, Mark, if we go on to the next one? So borrowing wise, wanted to update the board. If we use, which we had planned to, general obligation borrowing for the project this year, the projects, I should say, this year, the total amount of borrowing capacity that you guys have under state law is a little bit below, a little bit over twenty-eight million. It's five percent of the equalized value of the entire village. With the proposed borrowing, and again, we're doing it as a not-to-exceed number with the idea that's probably going to come down from that, but with the not-to-exceed number, we'd have about fifteen point three million outstanding. So the blue bars represent how much would be outstanding after this financing. The red line at the top is the maximum. So we're still got some room there, and as you guys know, you've taken on some large projects in the last couple of years, and so these numbers are higher than where they've been historically, because of those bigger-than-normal legacy-type projects that the village has taken on. Okay, Mark, if we go to the next one? So preliminarily, if we were to borrow for all of those projects, and the ones we have to keep checking are, we'll go back and double check the water, the sewer, because I think it's very, I won't say very likely, but, but more than fifty percent chance that we get verification on the cash situation for the sewer utility, that that sludge thickener can get pulled out. But for now, with the whole million, four million, six forty included in a single issuance, a million, two ninety-five for streets, four sixty-five for the water portion of the street work this year, two seventy-five for the sewer portion, police building, the one five ninety-five, refunding two ninety, and then again, those last two, the water meters and sewer sludge thickener, those would be all the components, some rounding in there to get to the four million, six forty in total issuance. The payments you see there in green would be the principal and interest payments to pay it back over a twenty-year term. They're a little bit higher at the front end because that debt that we did last year that I talked about refunding, there's a five-year amortization on that, so we're not suggesting extending that longer, still paying it over the same term, that's, that's why those payments are a little bit larger at the front end. Projections you see here are about fifty basis points above current market conditions, okay? So we're trying to be conservative on those projections, but just to give you a sense, that's, we'd be putting it all together in a single issue and that's what the entire repayment schedule would look like. Okay? All right, Mark, if we go to that next slide? Impact wise, as I mentioned from the previous slide, we're going to have a couple different funding sources, so water, we cover the water, sewer, we cover the sewer. This slide is looking just at the debt levy, so the blue bars are the existing debt of the village that you have to levy taxes for, and you can use your TID districts, tax increment districts pay some of your debt, your utilities pay some of your debt. The blue bars are representative of what the levy is for projects that you have to go to the taxpayers and do a general obligation levy for. The bulk of that is the debt we did a year ago for the EMS facility. That's not all of it, but it's a big chunk of it, and the year, two years ago, and then the acquisition of the building from last year, that's what would be in there. The red bars would be the new issue on top of the existing debt, so you see the, with the projections, the conservative interest rates right now, going from the high five hundred thousands in principal and interest up to about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand for the payment due next year. And then gradually over time, it falls, but you could, it's pretty, pretty level though for quite a bit of the, of the time on the repayment schedule. The other thing I should mention in here is this assumes, and we talked about this as a policy question when we did the acquisition of that building last year, this assumes that the lease payments that you're getting from the DNR producing that facility are reducing what you have to levy for the debt. So you're, I think it's, what is it, Paul, two hundred, something, is it two hundred sixteen thousand, is that estimate?
Well, what we're receiving right now is two sixty-five, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred a year until negotiating.
Yeah.
About what? Well, hold on, we're refurb that building and we're getting another coal storage, so that's where your job is to get, I want the farm and I want the neighbor's farm. That's your job, Paul. But that's figured in?
In the model right now is two hundred and sixteen thousand, so...
That's probably pretty, I would keep that pretty close right there, that's pretty fair, I think, right now.
Yeah, and I think Paul and Mark and I had some conversations with it, that's the number we used last year when we did the acquisition. Okay? All right, Mark, if we can go to that next slide? So this next slide, just to give you a sense of the numbers change, the only difference with this schedule from the previous schedule is we pull those water meters out, okay? And if we also are able to pull out the sewer sludge thickener and we don't have to borrow for that, it'd be about a similar drop, maybe even a little bit more, because the issue, the original one with everything included is about four point six million, this one's four point three, if we take out the sludge thickener, then you're talking about three point nine. And I, I think we, you know, have a fighting chance of getting there, we just want to make sure those numbers, because what we didn't want to have is start a situation where we're not covered for all the costs. We can always pull things out and reduce things down. Okay? All right, Mark, if we go to that next one? Now, timeline wise, and this can be adjusted, but what we had talked about, we want to sync this up with your bidding schedule, is giving you guys an update today. I've got some questions that you've thrown my way and Kim's way, we'll get answers to those and get those circulated to you so you have them. Probably at your first meeting in, or your meeting in June, we'll have a memo updating everything so you know... in, or your meeting in June, we'll have a memo updating everything so you know where those questions sit and any adjustments to the issue. Then toward the end of the month, our plan was to time the financing with when you guys would open the bids to try to bring those two things together so you know we have the funding in place to deal with the projects. We had discussions last week, I think we had put June, excuse me, June 25th on there. Might, it sounds like it might be the 26th in terms of your, your construction bidding. But that should be a ballpark, and then a couple weeks after, on the 15th of July is when you'd have cash in hand. I know you've already started, some of the street projects I mentioned are already moving this year. So I wanted to give you that as a target date, but it sounds like that date, if you can manage things until that date for the street projects, having the funds in hand starting that date will allow you to pay for the projects that really kick in in August on remodeling that building and the garage facility as well. So we'll fine-tune this, but that was the schedule we anticipated going, going forward.
Question?
Yes.
U2 Graham, the sludge thickener, 400,000, is that including the 120 that we're getting from people?
No, what's that?
Is that, is that part of that, or has it been subtracted off the cost to give to us the 400, or 400 is what we're gonna have to pay?
There's 120-ish, 130 a top that will probably be you, it'll probably cost close to half a million by 10th of May, do all they gotta do. Repiping and all that. We don't know for sure because we don't have the, I guess, the final layout of the piping and all that, so we don't have a for-sure number from RJ. From what he initially told us, it's gonna take the 500,000. But that being said, now that Viva doesn't want either stuff back, that hopefully's gonna substantially help the cost.
The 120, well, will?
I'm saying just having, not having to give her the old system, the MBT, having to package it up, send it away, whatever, is gonna help our cost for installation of pipe from RJ, your old speed. But it's still gonna, it's gonna take, we're gonna have to take 500,000, I would say, out of our funds and additional 120, 130s still gonna.
Yeah, I'd say stay with the 400,000, probably no more from RJ.
Yep.
Okay, so what's for you?
Just piece of equipment was the 300 plus.
So people are basically paying for RJ to put it in, we're just paying for the equipment that kind of, that 120 kind of, whatever?
Yeah.
Would we better opt just to pay it? Cash money?
Yeah.
And put it on the tax roll, I mean?
It, it would be out of your savings from the sewer, or I'm calling it.
That's been already taken out of this, it's not like that's on the, it's in the, so it's in the loan, but is this gonna affect the taxes by having it in there?
No, this will be paid by the.
So we're just borrowing it, but it's being paid from our sewer account, so it's not affecting the taxes to the taxpayer.
Yeah, if we have to borrow it, we'll have a separate debt schedule that the sewer utility fund is responsible for. Or if we have, we determine there's enough cash, we'll just pay the cash and then it will never be in that loan at all.
All right.
But it would not be on the, that part is not expected to be charged at the taxes.
So what we're doing is just kinda saving ourselves to keep our coffers high for some unpredictable problem with the sewer plant or sewer pipes or something like that, that's what we're.
What I'm hoping is we find it's high enough that we can have the savings for that down the road and pay cash for this.
Yep, I love that too.
But we wanna, we wanna know for sure, that's, that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
And your auditors, and the audit's moving along, but not 100% completed, right? Which is not uncommon for this time of year.
We probably won't see the thing until October.
Hoping earlier this year.
We're hoping earlier.
Yeah.
We better be, we had this problem before. That's why we moved on from that auditor, and I know it's hardly fine auditor, so, but.
Yep.
Well, any more questions for the man? Thanks.
Yeah, so we'll get back to you guys on the water and as other things come to mind and we'll have an update. We'd probably need a special meeting at the end of the month, but you're probably gonna be doing that anyway with your bids, it sounds like. But we'll have something at the earlier meeting to update and hopefully have this stuff more locked in at the, the normally scheduled. Okay.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I just wanna go back to 11 quick for that update thing, so we can talk about it. We decided as a board, right, to go as far as the garage and the refurb of the building, correct? And then we'll do the, the cold storage thing that possibly could be with this new bid? Okay. I just wanna be clarified what, what we're actually doing here. Okay, 'cause.
But I think we need to do, that also include the parking too, right?
Yes, that was to keep the parking.
Yeah.
Yeah. We didn't, the only thing we axed out is that half a million dollars for that.
Yeah.
That icebox out back.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to clarify, that we were all on the same page here for this, because this is gonna come quick. And decisions are gonna be made here real soon on this, so, okay. Any more questions on that? All right. 13. I'm gonna butcher this again. Daria Walega, Wisconsin Community Development Investment Grant Application Agreement.
So this is just a development agreement as part of that Wisconsin Economic Development and CDF planning program. And it's just a formality, we're trying to get this in by the end of the month.
Okay.
So this is kind of the last piece.
So we just need approval on it? Just so she could possibly get some money?
Move to her.
Motion second, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 14, reviewing the proof of installation of pit water meters. Now remember, if we don't have no more money, well, our water money's gone, because Sean just told us that. Thanks, Sean, appreciate it, we'll be in contact soon.
So we've talked about this several times in the past. So this is pit meters, so basically it's a manhole going outside of trailer parks. Luckily, three of Marty have the correct things in place, so we're good to go there. So this is due to the PSC 185.53 metering, metering configuration, master metering, unless the utility owns the water distribution facilities within a mobile home park condominium or trust, the private system shall be master metered and the park owner shall be the utility, utilities billable customer. So that's where that stems from. In 2014, August 13th of 2014, this was actually approved to do, to do these pit meters.
Is that an ordinance or a law or something that you just read there or like that?
It's a Public Service Commission's.
Minister of Code.
Yeah. So that's where it all stems from. So there's two, I guess it'd be called the Trainers Mobile Home Park that would need to have this done, right now they don't have any, they have a old pit, basically that's a culvert, that's vertical, that has a meter in it that is non-functioning, because each individual trailer has its own meter currently. So there's two in the trainer areas, which would be six in Oak over there we get it put in, and there'd be two up in, well, it was there in your sport, I don't know what it's called now, but there's two up there as well we'd have to do. So I talked to Fember, Jay Haas Excavating, and Albrightson, and I'm sure you'll see in there that Albrightson was the cheapest at 37,000, Jay Haas is 39,200, and Fember was 64,000, I tried to get total excavating, give me a quote, but they were not interested in doing the work. So this, like I said, this entails putting in a manhole. We can put a water meter down there, inch and a half, two-inch water meter. That way you have access to it and kinda update the curb stops going into the trailer courts, because right now there's one in the Trainers Court that doesn't function, the curb stop, so you can't even shut them off, which they had a lot of issues this winter with pearls of water and whatnot. So it's kind of a bummer, so we had to shut down the main on the road then to address the issues. So that one is, one of them doesn't even work anyway, but in addition to, to manholes, we put new curb stops so you can shut, shut it off a lot better, all, all of them are pretty much old and hardly work, so. That's what I'm looking to do is get that stuff updated and have a pit meter for each of the areas, and they're kinda split up based on where they're at. On the, there's so many because they're on opposite sides of the road and stuff like that, so that's, that's what we're looking at now.
Question, Marty, just explain it to me. So right now each individual trailer has a water meter?
Yep.
Did we replace all those already, or they still?
Nope, we held off to, in the intention of doing this, we could do that if that's what you guys wanna do, but we really.
Right now, if you count out however many trailers at each price of a meter, or?
Like 20-ish thousands.
Yeah, you're almost saving this.
Right.
Cost.
Yep.
By going down to four meters.
Yep.
And then they're gonna hate us, because they need to decide the water.
Yep. And there are, there is one, one trailer court, I don't know what that one's called, it'd be on the north side of Oak, South Side of Maple. That Wilson Properties. They have a pit meter, not all they do their billing, but they have a pit meter for the one area, and then the other one is one inside a house that does a whole stretch of them, six, seven, whatever.
I build them with you.
So that's built to the, to the, yep.
Go ahead, see?
Oh, I have a question about the fairness of this meter's put in when there's multiple people living in the trailer homes, like I live in, I'm a single person, but across from me there's four people, so how is, how is the fairness of, of it being built? I, I would strongly object to paying.
Yep, that's up to the mobile home court.
How is that gonna be decided?
That's, that's up to the.
It's up to one person to make the decision.
Yep.
And what most people probably would do is an average, which is understandable, what your concern is.
Yep.
Yes, I mean, it's not gonna be fair. Not, there's no fairness to me, I don't understand it, but I don't see any fairness in the, in the way it's set up.
Yep, that's the, that's the mobile home court's owner's discretion to decide however they wanna do it, but unfortunately, that, that's up to them. We, we build them and then they build however they deem fit.
How's that fair?
And there's no way to tell which unit used what, or?
No. I mean, they can have their own, they can meet their own, they can have their own meter system and do it themselves, yeah. They can do that absolutely, they'd have to read their own meters. Yep.
Mean the individual or the owner of the court?
I'm sure the owner of the court would do it, but that, that's up to them, they could have you read it and record it, shut it, that's up to them.
Austin, say that again, what you just said. I'm, I'm a little lost here, I'm trying to pull this together here.
If we paid for the meters.
Yep.
Just think of how many trailers there are that we would have to buy new individual meters.
You don't have to pay a hydro cord.
Pay a hydro cord and install each meter. Say, figure about 20,000 just in the others in hydro cord, so.
At least.
Because there's 60-ish mobile homes that leave in those areas. So $300 a meter, well, $100 to solve them, so, yeah.
But isn't that less?
Well, I get, I get, I get what you're saying, but.
It's less than that, but it's, yeah. So if we switched to pit meters.
Yeah, but that, that's what you're saying, is that's the sun cost, we're going to be either paid or replaced all those meters, so that's the sun cost. We're gonna have to do that. Instead of doing that, we're gonna take that sun cost and apply it towards this, so this thing's a little less, so that's the cost. What was it, 400 dollars? Is it 400?
Four, oh, four, yeah.
That's 24,000 now, right? So it's 24,000 dollars that we're gonna have to pay no matter what, either place all those individual meters. Now, we're not gonna do that, so we'll take that 24,000 dollars that we're gonna spend anyway and offset it against this 37,000, so your incremental increase in cost is actually 37,040, is 13,040.
And I'll throw another.
That's what, that was the real incremental cost.
Another thing in this code, it says that for individual metering, basically if we take ownership of the, we, we basically have to, are responsible for the water underneath their facility.
I'll just kinda say.
And it says on here, all the facilities meet the utilities' construction standard, which I guarantee they probably do not, because they're so old under that area that they're not gonna meet our standard anyway. If, if we have to take it over and be technically in charge of the water, serving them.
That would be a.
And that's gonna make cost to it for the.
And obviously you can go one owner versus.
Yep.
So, Paul, is there any rule or ordinance or something like that that we can, that this owner just can't stick it to these certain people, you know, for their bill? I mean, how they figure it out, or, I mean, like, I understand what you're, I understand what you're getting at, but also the other side is we're saving ourselves a lot of money and we don't wanna be responsible for all the stuff going past that meter.
I don't think you have a lot of choice.
No.
You don't wanna take over the water lines, the service line for all those trailers. Is done is you'll have private meters for each trailer and you'll have the master one, and the owner should pay the master one and re-bill all the trailers based on those individual ones, like in apartment buildings, so those are set that way too.
They might just say, all right, one person lives here, we're gonna charge you this much. Whatever they figure out the number, maybe two people live there, someone figure a charge, you know, figure it out that way, I have no idea. That'd be, yeah, what they could do, and that's how they do it, that's up to them.
Would the old meters still stay on so that you could read them yourselves?
Yep.
As the individual?
Yep.
Would we have any right to, I don't know how I wanna say this, to pay that, only that part?
That's up to you, the owner. But at least you would have some kind of, you would have some kind of recourse, you know, if you get some kind of ungodly bill and say, well, this is like, this is how many gallons I use.
If those meters are working.
If, well.
They'd have to, I mean, they'd have to renegotiate, develop new leases on it, because water's not cleared on any of these.
But I understand, yeah, we have. We really can't go and be responsible for all the stuff underneath, right up to now.
No.
Plus, they already had issues all the way through.
Yeah, we had Ivans several, several times, and then there were ones all up and down, they were issues with.
Are there any, just any resources you can put people in touch with for like, for housing, equity, or something like that? Do you know of anything?
Go ahead.
So you're talking about putting pit meters in a couple of the driveways, or I'm assuming driveways?
Well, greed space, ones in the driveway, yeah, yep.
Okay, so I live on.
Yep.
Sixth, in 43. When Albrightsons put that big barrel or whatever in, it cracked my whole ceiling when they dropped. A lot of owners told me to contact Albrightsons. I did several times, they would not call me back, nothing. So nothing has been done with my ceiling. Now you're gonna have to dig it up again and do it?
No, no, yours is brand new, it's good to go, you just put a meter in there the other day. That one's great shape. Done in 2016 or 14, that one's good to go, that one we don't have to mess with.
So that meter that put in checks all of ours?
It just records, it just records the flow coming into whoever's using water past that point, so all them on that line, yep. Wherever the water goes, it reads it for the whole stretch there.
So there are, so they're already, that one's down, Graham?
Yep.
So we're just billing the lump sum to that per donor?
We will be once, oh, we just put it in the, we.
We'll, okay.
Does the owner hold those? Have we communicated that?
Well, and they're selling the court.
Yeah, it's a new, gonna be a new owner.
Why are they gonna get new leases?
Again?
Yeah, yes.
Because it wasn't Trainers, it was somebody else, right?
Yep.
It was Justin Hoskins, we got a letter yesterday that it's being sold, supposedly somebody from California.
Well, we've been talking about this for years.
Yeah.
And so I make a motion, we.
So I, I, I think we should use Albrightson, because we were both them, and I make a motion to very approve Albrightson, that's a little bit.
I'll second that.
And they fixed my ceiling?
Thank you.
That's something you'll have to deal with them, well.
I don't know how, but.
Okay, motion second to take Albrightsons for the pit meters. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports, Public Safety and Personal Committee. Committee reports, Public Safety and Personal Committee.
Yeah, so we met on May ninth.
So, yeah.
The first one was a couple of issues. One of them was around Chief Mordog, we had Neil Zach leaving, moving to Lieutenant position. He does not want to refill that position at the moment. He wants to kind of hold that one back. He wants to actually put a sergeant, a patrol sergeant, and place that on the road. So we have two patrol sergeants now instead of having a sergeant on the other end. He also wants to move, um, the investigator position to investigator sergeant position to help with some of the access to some of the different database systems, sounds like. Right now, well, that sergeant title correct, that we can't get into some of the databases. Kevin has to log in first before he gets in. It's so it's to help us be more efficient, um, and some of that, so. So that was one of the stuff on the police side, as long as we also will be posting the job coming up, get it back built. So that's coming up. Uh, the other thing we talked about was with the general labor, labor and the public works department, Zach has put his resignation in. So we are gonna be reposting that job, that position, and that'll be going out shortly here. We're gonna try to close it quick by the end of this month, twenty-third. Do interviews and hopefully we come back by that June meeting with the recommendation, um, hopefully to who filled the position right. I think that's what we talked about later, so.
Perfect. All right, Ben, we gotta give this though. We gotta issue that, Ben. Amy, planning commission, I'll let you tape this because I completely dropped the ball and was about ready to drive home from work and never thought about the planning commission meeting. Sorry, Eric, forgot what you're doing.
We got it, it's okay. Um, Eric did most of this, so, um, you may back me up. We talked about mobile home first, um, looking at expansion, a new concept plan. There wasn't really anything to approve, other than tell them, okay, we'd like to speed your plans. Yeah, we didn't really approve anything. So, yeah, we're looking for a concept plan from them and then a C S M from two different mobile homes, so.
Awesome. Yeah, it was just odd that it was, um, two different, completely separate items.
Yeah.
But they're all mobile parks. And so, Amy said the first one was concept to expand the one that's up by nine and lockers. But it was only a concept plan. Uh, planning commission was generally in favor of expanding it to create additional housing, but we just need to see. And then C S M was like a lot line adjustment, kind of cleaning up, I'd say, more than anything. And it is kind of questionable even if, if that would come before the planning commission and the board, a lot line adjustment. Because the code calls for subdivisions and that, adjustments. Uh, we've reviewed them in the past and, and so they, this one came through. But planning commission did recommend approval of the C S M. Or should we ask a cop, all the home expansion if you want, but.
So you need a motion to approve the C S M for number three. What's on is that, so fifteen C number three?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the C S M.
Yeah.
For Bob, mobile home court. Make that motion to approve that one.
Second.
Motion second. Questions, comments? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That was all? Now, talk about another meeting. Christine and I had a parts and wreck meeting. Do you want to take this, Christine?
Oh, let's see here. Um, we had a meeting on April twenty-first, seems like, oh, I don't know.
It does.
April twenty-first, and we were talking about, um, the baseball fields. Um, we were talking about the use of, uh, Hill Pond Park. There are a year or so, year or two of fees that have not yet been collected. And so we resolved that as noted in our packet, um, the minutes for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Josh with the, with the baseball, um, and softball association also are talking about some concrete work, a concrete pad. That would run the length of the batting cages, be about twelve feet wide. He was going to pay for that with the, um, with his club's money. But did ask for assistance with the public works department to prep the area and get the gravel pads started. So we did recommend to approve the addition of the concrete pad for the baseball, at the baseball association's expense. The public works assisting for the gravel preparation. We also discussed baseball field netting and doing the fence. Some details in your packet on the notes there.
Can or, is it?
Yeah.
I thought we approved all that like a year ago. Approved what?
The netting.
The netting, the fence and the pad. It was, we, we talked about the safety netting and then never got any monies. And then the ball association basically fell off the base of the planet. And we were supposed to have another meeting and I, we couldn't pull one together. And then all of a sudden, last second, they started blowing up Jody's email. So we didn't?
Nope. They got the concrete. They do have that, that part they did last year for batting cages. They wanted a little bit of an addition to that for this year. But the backstops and all that, they got quotes and whatnot, but nothing ever happened.
So something was done?
Yep. Yep.
We got as far as like, they wanted to move the softball fence. Well, then it was just too late in the season. We pushed it off. They wanted to have another meeting in the fall. Christine and I could not get together, I mean, to work this out until.
But you're right, there have been conversations for a long time.
Yes.
All these comments, but if no, we'll just add, yeah, and that we would get together at the next meeting because we're, what we're stuck on was that. Uh, so now we're back to talking about the funding. So with the netting, we talked about that. That's, uh, I think we're all pretty passionate about the safety aspect of the netting. For all of the participants there, so that's like a pretty easy, um, a pretty easy follow-through to, to talk about. Moving through with getting netting and fencing, whatnot. And then we also spoke about, now off of the baseball stuff, now we're talking about, there is at Crimery Park, there is a new sign for, that shows quotes for the people on running paths. And things of that are walking paths, things of that nature. Um, it's about one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Sign size is eighteen by twenty-four, just gives the community some direction on some safe walking, running areas within our community. Make sure we have a picture of that there, not the packet.
Somebody come up with that? Yeah, so somebody came to Jody, um, Andrew Krog, Andrea Krog, yep. And it's basically just a five K, kind of a, a, a highlight of what, what roads to go down and then where to end. And then it'll be a five K, and I think there's a ten K possibly on there too, safe road. And she just thought that'd be good ideas for people that run in town or walk in town and Creek Park was the best place, so.
So we recommended that. And then lastly, there was a proposal or an idea, I'd say floated, that Baldwin should have a dog park. But there was no representative that came to me to speak about that. Um, and so we didn't, uh, we just noted that, that somebody had suggested that. There isn't any funding ideas or anything yet at this juncture, any details that followed that request. And then last but not least, um, we discussed with the soccer representation, the request for soccer fields to be located near the wastewater treatment plant site. And we talked about the current lease that's out there and, um, possible expansion of the soccer plans. Noted that that would take several years to actually come to fruition, um, but the committee likes the idea of using that space for our community, but not crowding the plant. So they actually, um, came with a really nice drawing of, in a phased approach to putting soccer fields over there. We did bring up the smell over there, um, but also noted that Baldwin is smelling town anyway. With the, with the fields that are around and just kind of nature of the beast, so something too, too upsetting with that. They have a really good plan and, um, are working on, um, their fundraising and efforts to, to connect with that. I think they resented that the village would be in charge of mowing and, um, talked about some right away conversations. So there's to the road over there with the school, I think owns that road at this junction. So some work would need to be done to make these fields accessible. Some shared costs in building that road because we would also be using that road as an access to our, to our facilities.
So is this to replace the current or in addition?
Mr. George, come on up, watch a little, just a quick little presentation here of like what you kind of proposed to us. And we'll probably have to give approval from the board on this.
Yeah, so, um, we have over two hundred and fifty soccer players this season and we are running out of space. We have just about maxed out all of our field space over in Woodville and most of our field space here in Baldwin as well. What we're trying to do in phase one is consolidate our fifteen-year-old teams with our six and eight-year-old teams because we use the fifteen-year-olds to help coach the six and eight-year-olds. And we can't get them into one location. Right now, they are in three locations between Woodville and Baldwin, um, both at Mill Pond and down at Dutch. And so what we would like to do in our first phase is actually in the lower left corner there, um, so this would be accessed off of County Road J. It would be a parking lot with a hundred and fifty spaces and then field space for two full-size soccer fields. And then a little bit more space for the smaller soccer fields in phase one. Everything north of the irrigation pivot is, uh, phase two, three down the road. So the access would be relatively short right off of County Road J there and, um, yeah, that's phase one concept that we're looking at developing. And, uh, that would be what we'd be giving fundraising for in the near term.
Christine and I did approve the request, the recommendation, I suppose, approval, recommendation to board for this. We said there's right now no funding from us as of right now until we get further down and figure out what's going on, but. That's one of the requests and then I would have asked, can we throw that, Paul, that sign in there too with the one motion? You want to do two motions, I suppose, is everything?
So you propose to lease this land from the village?
We didn't talk about these. We basically told them that at any point in time that we could take it back if we needed to put an addition on it for the sewer plant at our discretion.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna get, it doesn't have to have, you could give it an hour. You're gonna have to define the areas and.
Well, I, I think we got plenty of time to work up a lease because it's gonna take a little bit of time for them to.
Yeah, I don't know what's your time in this for phase one.
They want, they, well, they want to start fundraising. They want, they want to build a lock-in of place so they can start fundraising. We're in a very early, early stage with this.
Yeah, so there's plenty of time to do that. We don't want to talk.
Will the county allow them to put a driveway off J?
You know, I think, what is the rule? Every two, a hundred feet? That, that's another question to be asked, but I mean, it would be a village, we would probably request it, correct?
Eric just want to make sure because if they don't approve it, then they gotta come off behind it then.
Right.
Yeah.
Or we'd have to give them access through our sewer plant, which that's not gonna happen. That's not a terrible idea, right?
Is the one by the school that you know is actually considered a true access?
That's the schools, that's the schools.
But is it actually considered a?
I don't know, that's a good, that's a good question. Can you talk to the county and see if, I mean, off of, or was there anything on that? You didn't have nothing off County Road J access, did you?
No.
I know they made sewer plant do, um, more of an improved access, like it wasn't just a driveway or a.
Turnway, it was a river.
Yeah.
So what we were discussing in this meeting is, is the village supportive of, of, um, the soccer club? Getting fundraising with the intention that we welcome a conversation about them using that by not, rather than using, you know, for farming. Knowing that they're gonna take a couple of years to, to do some fundraising and there are some details that to be ironed out. So nothing final, but what this does, because we say we, we express some interest in, in working with them. That gives them some meat to hang on to for fundraising. If they're like, well, the village won't even talk to us about the land, then it's difficult to fundraise more. So we do realize that there are some details to be ironed out here. Um, we have a little bit of time. Is that right? That's what you understand as well?
That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, this is basically a concept line that's doing it. And they're gonna come back when they get more things pulled together now.
So, Paul, do we, can we say yes that we're interested in having a lea, a future lease to land so they can start, they can save? Yep, we got property now that we can build on later when we go fund raising.
Motion that you're supporting to work with the soccer club to utilize that land in future.
And then when, when they come to us saying, well, we got money, we're ready to start building, that's when we do the lease?
Probably before that, yeah.
Or do you want to do the lease immediately?
No, I, I don't want to do the lease until we know what their final plans are. And that's gonna be done, the lease won't take that off, you know? If they have accesses of whole size of the sewer plant, can they get that? Maybe not. So then you find students.
Yeah.
So is that a motion to confirm the access?
Yeah, just a motion supporting it.
And then we'll have Eric, Eric can get back to us. The driveway is kind of a huge diligence thing. I think you can make a motion with all of the driveway included, um, and then we can start to try to look at.
I'll make a motion that the village supports the B W Soccer Association's concept.
I'll second.
Of course you would. Don't wait for the gun, sorry. Motion second. Questions, comments?
So the other thing that came up with that is that that would, that should free up some of these other fields that are around town too. And at that juncture, start talking about that space as well.
Yeah. Don't, don't even start me on the pickleball because there's pickleball players constantly when I'm down there with soccer.
Somebody said the word pickleball.
Here it comes, next one. Who want the other half of the probably big pickleball courts with soccer association? All right. Any more questions, comments? All favor say aye. There you go. We, we probably, we got, yeah, because we're spending money on that, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Harp Run sign in Crimery Park for the amount of one thousand.
Yep, that's exactly where it's coming out of. We got a motion second. Questions, comments? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I think that was it, huh? They're not, we're not paying more. I mean, I mean, well, I suppose we have. Marcus, what? You're getting written up for that, so. So do we, we do it for the concrete or no? I mean, let's. No, I mean. It's our part, we're just, yeah, it's our concrete, so I think we'd be good on that. Ambulance committee.
Ambulance committee met, I see Thompson podium, but we're having some current issues with the current billing company. Uh, committee recommended that we, um, make the change from our current company to the new company E C P. If you want to hear more, Tom can explain.
Didn't we just do this like a year ago?
No, we've been with LifeQuest for a long time.
Oh, okay.
LifeQuest got bought out by EMS M C.
Oh.
And I kept you guys in a loop last year. I'm gonna have an issue. There were a flow on billing. Um, they took over billing in April. They took over billing in April last year and it's just been a nightmare. Numerous complaints from patients. I have a drunk. I called a representative, it's forty seven plus, and it'll wait whole times, sent an email, they're not getting responses back in the weeks. And lots of other issues as far as billing, who they're billing, how they're billing.
The local company, or the company is local to Wisconsin, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. There were some savings from the the existing billing providers and the new one. The only increase would be is if bills would go to collections, they have a little higher fee for collections. But Tom is sure just that, yeah.
We currently still pay a higher fee.
And there was some good references that were on that contract. So the committee recommended to the board, or committee recommended to move forward to the boards.
Okay, so obviously we need more for that.
Make a motion to change from E M S.
M C.
M C to E C P.
Yep.
So I guess, how much time is left on the current contract?
It auto renews, but we have like thirty day, we have a thirty day notice and we're losing contract saves.
What, a thirty day notice?
In the contract last June twenty twenty four, it was three year on renewal.
It's through the twenty seventh.
And we did not alert being bought out of the college one day to where you're doing company.
So do I need to go by from my statement then? So you get to give a thirty day notice, is that what it is?
I don't, I don't think there's a thirty day notice to cancel a contract. There's probably a thirty day notice to not renew it.
Oh, I see.
So there were, there were terms in there if they can't meet certain terms. We have.
And that, that would be the key is to document all these problems to show that there was a fall.
Yeah, Kim's been working with Tom, so there was.
It's definite failure of performance on the accounting side, the reporting I'm getting is terrible.
We got a lot of stuff documented already.
Document that and notice on the plan, you know, that you don't need a permit, then we'll see what it is.
Is there any terms that are like verbiage that make it easily, you know, contract or?
If they're voiding the contract, right, I think it's supposed to work now, that's it.
Yeah, they're in violation, they're. And highlights are included in there, so. That's all been done and documented. So I just made a motion to change services, but is the motion really that to turn in documentation and serve notice?
Yeah.
I already got, so probably gonna need to restate it.
Uh, that's Joey. Need to restate that.
Motion to change from E M S M C to E C P and serve notice.
So I'm gonna say this motion is actually to serve notice to E C.
E M S M C.
E M S M C. And ending our contract and move to service provider, village service provider, E C.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Do you want to still second that?
Yeah.
Say motion. Here we have a motion second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. That was the end of the village, or the ambulance committee? Eric? You're up?
We're working on the infrastructure improvement plan, that's what we're calling it. Got a map, we'll, we'll staff here and present it amongst, we'll kind of review things and make some. Pretty good, but basically what it's doing is putting together a list of of projects. Mainly three reconstruction projects, a couple of water main connection projects, that kind of thing. Just gonna lay them out and figure where they fit. And so this would be a part of, you know, what could be a bigger kind of capital improvement plan piece. So try to budget out further than just next year. So we'll keep working on that. And like different things kind of keep popping up. I don't know, you want to talk about the bridge, I hear, or?
I don't know, yeah. Then you can chime in after I speak.
Okay. That's all it.
All right, thanks Eric. Well, let's get into it, Graham.
Four, you want more?
No.
Oh, the food truck, I'll play a three long food truck. I'm just looking at you. Review and approve requests to locate food truck in Bailey Park at twenty twenty five Farmers Market, Siang. Who put this on here?
Um, the, the managers of the, of the Farmers Market asked if they could bring a food truck in. And in order to have a food truck there during Farmers Market, it's on village property. That should be approved by the village, the food truck is located, that's all. It's just during the.
Not that I'm questioning it. No, is that a permanently sit there and it's gonna be every Saturday all the way through October or whatever Saturday you decide to come?
Now, do the food truck have to go, no, because.
It's not even a truck, I don't think.
Looks like a food stand.
Oh, okay.
Just a vendor.
Let me ask a vendor for a special event.
You need some foods.
I thought that was to find us a food truck.
You got egg rolls, I'm going to.
So the Farmers Market is wanting an approval. Move to approve having Siang and what is it called?
Country Egg Roll.
Country Egg Roll, food truck, food stand at the Farmers Market every Saturday this twenty twenty five season.
Motion second. Questions, comments?
Question, so if they're doing any type of deep frying, is that all met with the county?
Yeah, she's licensed by the state of the county for. Yeah, does it have, we get copies of the license?
Have to be in a truck and.
It has to either be vented or open air.
Yeah, that's a solid question, man.
If it's a truck, they have to be vented, if it's open air, they're fine.
Okay. Good question. Any more questions? That was a good one, Matt. I was right with you, like.
It's not a truck, so she can only get her four hours. Just like hot dog cart. Hey, we found that.
Why you know this?
We found it out for the street dance. Hot dog cart lady, she can only get up four hours and you have to throw everything away and go through a full cleaning. And then she can go back all three, four hours. And that's her in an actual truck.
That's part of the county.
If you're, if you're a mobile, yeah, if you're a mobile service, then you do have to restock it.
Every four hours. Throw it all away every four hours.
Any more comments about the hot dog stand? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Yeah, we can go with Graham. You seem to be taking a smile like a lot since you started this. I've never seen Brad ever get up there and talk.
All right, I got a lot of updates, we're super busy. Utility shut everything from the food pantry, we refurbished it for Mr. Calhop, he's loving it for the dump attendant. Makes it the best thing ever.
What are we doing with the old one, putting it in the burn pile?
No, somebody wants to take it, I guess, I don't know who, but.
Seriously?
Yeah, or something. The park bathrooms have all been opened up for the season. Our seasonal cemetery parks maintenance guys have been out going. Zach was out spray patching potholes. We just had some fresh asphalt the other days, so we can start filling the puddles with that as well. I met with partner asphalt and discussed potential roadways to be micro surface for this year and different options for road treatments. We had a pre-construction meeting for the ninth Avenue Street project with all rights and. And tentatively, June, or June second, they'll be starting removal on the south end, like by paying you in there, the dead end. Starting out there and getting after it. Hydro core has been installing water meters for our final stage, the last day is tomorrow. And cracking jumper been helping as much as they can shut the waters off, getting meters in. And it went extremely well. And as of today, we have about half a dozen that haven't scheduled that. Some are gone that we know about, there's only a couple houses that we weren't able to contact, the tenants. But some we've reached out to the landlord, homeowner, we just haven't heard nothing from them, so we'll have to do some on our own. There's probably half a dozen, maybe a little more than that, that have issues with where the meters at. Like one's right behind a wide meter, you can't even, or a water heater, you can't even reach the thing, so it's gonna have to be replumbed. Few like that, but otherwise, for the most part, we've got almost all of them in, which it went really good. Ridge trucks is sweeping streets, fertilizing the ballfields and parks. Jeremy's continued to work with S E H regarding the placement of that new fixture, the specs, the setup. We kind of finally got today, I would say, a hard drawing of where it's gonna be located for piping lengths and sizes and all that. So hopefully now that we have that, R J Gurovski can give us more accurate numbers with what it's gonna take to install it. We're, we're getting closer anyway to having that. The Baldwin, Woodville School District, contact us in regard to Service Learning Day, which was today. And we had students install, just add the mulch around the trees at Woodville, Creamery Park. So they did that, they picked up there, we're just on like Maple Street, two twentieth, talk to fifty fifth. And then some things I don't have on there. Received our new cat loader a couple of weeks ago with that snow plow, so that's in. They took the old one that we trained it in just yesterday and I think they finished today, maybe. The generators were all inspected, did their maintenance on them that we do every year. Tomorrow at six P M, the Blue Star Memorial in Woodville Park, that ceremony will be going on. So we'll be placing the actual Blue Star on that monument that's been sitting there since last fall. And they'll have their ceremony at six P M.
Did you say tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yep. Zach, his last day was yesterday. He actually did a fantastic job with anything we asked him to do. Money was the thing there, just wanted to make more money, so he decided to go somewhere else. Crosswalk on sixty three Franklin by Quick Trip. New Electric is the one that's gonna be installing the, the sonar tubes for it, the mounting tubes and the actual beacons. And after they did a locate, they decided they better use a tractor truck to do the holes, there's gas, there's all sorts of stuff in there. So originally they were gonna use an auger on the skid steer, but decided against that because of what's in there after they did the locate. So we're just waiting on them to get somebody to hydro back for them to do the work.
Tell them to go right through the fiber.
It's just gas right in the spot we want to put it. And the last thing I got, which was brought to our attention yesterday, is with this bridge on sixty three. They potholed and found our force main leaving that lift station, so there's a lift station right south of Dollar General there. And the force main, which is a six inch ductile iron pipe coming out of there, is right above where it shouldn't be as far as the surface of their, bottom of their structure. So we might have to have it moved to make it work. I don't know why they didn't determine this three years ago and they started, they started designing this, but they finally potholed and found it. There's water main right in there too, which they were unable to find so far, they went down and down and down, finally kind of gave up for the day. They're going, they're gonna go on the north side of the creek, this is all on the south side that they found the stuff. Now they're gonna go to the north side and try to find water main and force main to kind of see what elevations are on that side. So this was just figured out yes, or Monday or Tuesday, it was on Tuesday, yesterday. So we may, may have to move our force main. I don't know, Eric, you can spiel it more.
It, I guess it's, it's not as deep as, as we thought it might be when we're, when they're looking at plans. They mentioned to us in December that it was in a spot that could be in conflict. And I'm like, okay, what do we need to do? It is, need to get moved, you know? And they're like, oh, don't, don't worry about it, we're not sure if it's really cropping yet. Now they let us know yesterday and I talked to them, I said, okay, how quick is this? Become a delay issue on your end? He said, Monday. Monday, it's in our way. So I'm like, I don't know. So that was a guy that was on site. Didn't get a call, actually, did a text, was on phone with the project engineer. And he said he would call back in the morning. But Graham talked to him, said he might have a solution of not having that relocated, but.
We don't know if that solution would be something.
We want to do, we don't, we don't know.
Relocated that, I'm not paying for it.
Their, that's their, may as well pay for it.
They'll say they have to pay for it because it's relative utility in there, I don't think. It's kind of an ad run, it's a lot of thing, I'm sure.
Tim, go write that bill out, or that check out, or I won't sign it, let's see how far that goes. Take me to court.
I'm ready.
No. We won't win that. Nothing against Graham, I know this project, I, I had the same plans for how many years? We had to move our fiber. I think it's, I think it falls on the village, I'm sorry. We didn't do our due diligence and check how deep our force main was. I mean, it's up to the utility providers, I'm, I'm wearing a different hat right now. And, you know, when those plans come in from Wisconsin State D O T, they give you elevations, you know? I, I'm just kind of upset on the village side now that we didn't do that. I'm very upset. And Graham, I know you weren't the director, so, I mean, they got machines that. So I, I'm upset that we, we have to pay for this. We didn't figure this out how many years ago when the plans came out. Plans don't change, I, I already can tell you that.
No, assuming if we have to pay for it, we pay it through our teeth.
So I, I'm, I'm wearing both hats, so I, I, I guess I can't, I can't go back and scold somebody that we didn't do our due diligence and find something. Find something out that we were supposed to when these, when the road project went out, so.
And this, this doesn't help the situation, but the gas that they just poured in to the, close to the road is too shallow. They just did a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, or it was two months ago. That's not even up there, so.
And that was on our pre-con meeting and they already knew about that. That crew never even, oh, that crew.
Not so good.
Hey, guess whose stuff's all good? Mine.
So what's the diameter on a force main?
That was a six inch ductile iron.
So I, I don't know, I mean, if we can work with the state, yeah, I mean, I get it.
Can you just bury it deeper?
You can just bury it deeper underneath the creek, yeah, but it's gonna cost.
Oh, the creeks, the creeks.
A lot of money.
So should we approve Real Ransel real quick here to give us development there?
Upgrade that.
Yeah, because, because I know that, and it's probably, you know, we, and somebody probably said, yeah, our force main's probably fifteen feet deep and. You always go on. Until you physically see, that's what I've been told.
Yep.
Yeah, so like, I, I've helped send in information on like on location of village utilities. And I, I, this one, you know, there was an assumption of a force main is this deep, so. I, I didn't make that decision. It just, it is what it is now. The biggest unfortunate pieces is, is that, you know, the timing of it. It's something that is known since December potentially and. And, and a week before it's supposed to be moved.
Because technically, and Eric can speak to this, if they can actually build, and Paul probably knows too, that because this is a state project, we're in violation of the Trans 220, which means we were supposed to have our utilities moved in. If they're in the way, they can charge us for the delay of the project. So that's just another thing that, that they add to that. This is all the stuff I've learned in the last how many years of working on road projects. Especially with the state of Wisconsin.
That's just what it is now. Something you do, boy.
So I, I don't, Graham, I, what's, what's, I mean, whether you're working with Eric, what's the sum? So we have a contractor lined up, I mean, or are they still looking at it? I mean.
They're still trying to figure out kind of what avenues we could potentially do.
Yeah. Apparently there's potential that it won't have to be.
That's what they're hoping to do, but I don't know. They're forward, so I don't know. Have to follow up with them and add, be a, probably call Albretson and say, hey, can you do this? Type thing. Like now.
Is that a weekend crew?
Yeah. There's somebody who, because that'll have to be bored under the creek, right?
Well, they've, they've gotta have open construction there going on with their, the placement of the pipes, I'll earth.
Yeah, they're doing it in two phases because they're rerouting the stream.
So is there an opportunity to use whatever they have in, in open cut? I don't know, I haven't got that.
I don't think so because they're rerouting the, the Rush River. Because it's part of the rush, they're rerouting, they're doing a diversion when they put... So, I mean, we'd have to only do half, and then when they divert it the other way.
Well, let's just figure it out when we get there. I mean, you called out at four o'clock today, right?
Well, that might not happen. Yesterday when they found the force main at that elevation and they were doing the math and said, oh, we'll see the right spot.
Okay. So, no?
Thanks, Graham.
Yep, thanks, Graham. I was gonna ask a bunch of questions, but I'm like, I don't, I don't bother. Okay.
Very gourmet.
Baseball coach.
Yeah, yeah. Brought a change of clothes and then I forgot the shirt, so. We'll just roll with it, see what happens. So I'll just recognize, first of my agenda is Police Week this week. Our officers, uh, went over to Hudson, the sheriff's office, where they have the memorial that they just created. And we took part in that ceremony. It's a really nice memorial that they have there and it recognizes the four local law enforcement officers who've lost their lives in the line of duty in St. Craig County. It's also, you know, just a good, uh, moment to just say thank you for your support from the board. And I'll let you do to, uh, assist us in what we have to do out there. Also, it's good to see Austin here tonight and Ashley at our first meeting. So we're grateful for that. You've contributed, you've showed your support by, obviously, last year with the recent loss of Deputy Katie, sending and supporting two of our officers going to Washington DC to the National Memorial. And that really means a lot to, in our, of our department when we see things like that. And I want you to, um, just be aware. So thank you. Community engagement, we've been trying to, you know, um, be really, really involved in the community, engage, one of the examples. Um, you know, obviously we do color with the cop, thank you. And, um, we have EMS, we have fire representatives there. And it's really just a good way to connect. Some things that we're trying to do too, to also engage in the community includes like, uh, social media. So we just developed like an Instagram post. And also kind of revamping, um, how we do our Facebook. We do have, uh, we put some short videos out there. I think that give, uh, get a good response from the community. And that's what we're kind of there for. So it's good to see, um, good community of police in, and we're thankful for that. Going into our staffing update, um, I had a table on there, but, um, it's, uh, just addressing, um, our needs as far as structure went. We kind of got the brief, uh, on the Personnel Committee. Um, we do have a vacancy now at the Lieutenant's position. And we're looking at our priority is to hire a new officer to fill the ranks from below. We also have, um, Officer Deikhaus, who's put in 20 years of service here. And it looks like he will be officially retiring in June. So we, we have those two that we're prepared for. Right now I'm working with the Police Commission and we're trying to establish how we're gonna go about, uh, addressing like just our department's structural needs. To ensure we can operate efficiently and get the job done on the community. You know, this one I thought about maybe not putting in there, but. Uh, so anyways, I'll skip down to calls for service. So one of our downstream goes, um, we, you know, we had to place out of service for a transmission issue and we recently got it back in. The good news is it's under warranty still. So we got, we got that fixed and it's back in service. We're also waiting, uh, our new squad to be built. We just have, uh, just actually one piece of equipment that's holding us up. And we're right there, pretty excited for it. So once we get there, they'll see that out on the street. We added, uh, I don't know, we added a little bit of graphics to our squad. They were kind of planning before we put our patch on there. So it can be a little more, uh, easily recognized when we're out in the community. And then we added in the back window, kind of like an American flag and it shows an abbreviated version of what our mission is in the community. And then also on the opposite side, it shows like our core values. So, um, I, I think they look sharp by the way. Yeah, uh, one thing I didn't, I, I put a little note in there. We do have a college intern that's, uh, just started this week. Um, she was in here before, uh, sitting by Investigator Bishno. So you may see her around, her name's Hannah. She's, she's been doing great so far.
Did you say it one more time, did you say college? She was, she was 12.
She looks, I said that.
I thought that was, I thought maybe it was Bishno's daughter.
Yes.
She's always looked young, because I know her. I've known her since she was a little kid. She's always, she has always looked really young.
That old, but, ah. Okay, sorry, I just, college.
Um, but yeah, so that's a, I think that's a, a good, good thing for our department. Um, bringing a little different, uh, approach. And then it also gives our, our officers a chance to, you know, kind of explain what we do and then also prepare the future, um, of law enforcement for what they're getting into. So it's a good, good way to give back. A lot of other communities do that. And, uh, this is kind of our, our first one and I explained to her, hey, you know, it's a trial. So we're gonna, we're gonna see how this works and we're putting it together. But she's, she's great so far, very understanding, so. Yep, so, uh, getting down to it, like, obviously just a little note on the road construction. We're monitoring that, it's kind of, it's a difficult process right now. So we're, we're trying to monitor as best we can to make sure people know we are. I know there's been some issues just with, uh, that I've observed. When traffic gets backed up and, uh, just some violations that occurred. So we try to curb that. They have curbed it all, so, sure. Anyways, yeah, thanks, Graham. That's why I like Graham. So calls for service, uh, pretty standard. And cases around 313, uh, through that period of April 9th, May 9th. Traffic stops, uh, and citations issued are all right in that same ballpark, so. That's all I have for my report. Any questions, Eric?
I'm not gonna ask about Graham, I'm just gonna, just bypass it, so.
Instead of us happy pulling this week.
Yeah, thank you.
Kind of stepping on your toes, isn't it? Police Week, it's Thursday's week. Oh, that was last week, okay.
Everybody gets their own week.
Big old party. You guys saw the report, 123 calls for service on roads before your number transfers in April. Transfers staying up, there was just a good sign. You know, a couple of things are on the station. We did DOT checks on three of our ambulances. One needed some adjustments to the parking brake, otherwise they'll pass. That's good. Uh, UWRF Fetch Group came up to our station. And this is a group of students at UWRF that bring in service dogs for a month of training. So dogs, you know, seeing blind, dogs were blind, hard of hearing or seizures, diabetics. So they came to our station, they got to go in the ambulances, listening to the light, you know, sirens, some of the other beats and stuff. The cots stay with their owners, handlers. So they really liked it, they probably come back quarterly to be training their dogs at the station, so. If we ever transport those patients, the dogs will be well first in the EMS side of things.
Are they dogs deaf or the?
No. These are just stable dogs. These are service dogs with people with blind, deaf, seizures, diabetics, all that stuff. They help those, they're, they're humans. Uh, they're, they're crewing a good time playing with the dogs. Well, our full-time medics Tyler received an injury off duty. So it wasn't a bone in the mess issue. Um, he's gonna be off for about three months, he tore his bicep. We had to, you know, didn't want to spend all that money on overtime. Be a lot of hours to fill, so we moved up one of our paid-on calls. Paramedics actually referred him to the town here in Baldwin, so she's been filling in and was running his rotation for him, so it's been working pretty well. Dispatch has requested, St. Craig County's starting to get a little busier. The fire channel's getting a lot of traffic, that's the channel we speak on, Dispatch. So any ambulance or fire department in the county uses that channel. We have had the technology for a while, now they're pushing us to start going silent more often. So you'll hear us going out. They'll probably hear us clearly, you won't hear us check on scene, go around to the hospital, we'll clear a hospital, it's all gonna be done by computers. Try to free them that channel a little bit. So the county, you're originally not sort of, sort of gonna be the anything for it for a while. So that's something new that, so. You don't hear a lot of radio traffic from us, that's why. We also now have the ability to start over on cards. So we take transfers, we grow information in, and we just gotta key the mic, say Dispatch, copy the transfer card, and they say, sounds good. So just like, uh, traffic stops a lot, of course, we don't have to tie up dispatches, tying up real information.
So while you're on the scene, you'll enter that in like on your computer?
Yep, we have, uh, tablets in our radio, we just hit on scene. Yep. Then documents of time.
We're saying people should know.
Yeah. We will know where each other are, we have tracking all of our trucks. So you'll actually see that we're on the scene, we just don't have to key up the mic. I know Austin and that does, why don't we get car accidents and big scenes like that and the radio traffic becomes horrendous and stuff gets lost, so. EMS building, obviously we talked about that already. A last thing is I did finish the Medicaid reimbursement plan. Kim helped a lot with that, gave me a lot of the numbers. But I submitted that here the first part of May, I haven't got a kickback yet from the program. So we will see what we get, I have no idea. So keep an eye on that. Thanks, Helen.
Right, so you have a list of events, so, that the library's done in the past month. National Library Week, we had five or six activities going on. It ended when Lance stood me up for candy bingo and didn't come. Uh, a shout out to...
I'm not engaged with my wife and I'm sorry about that.
I, I'm gonna give a crap about it, don't for a long time, Lance, so. A shout out to Officer Sam, we had two young lads who painted color with the cops last week. They had a negative impact and a negative view on the police force and, and police officers. Sam sat down with them and went on one. By the end, they thought they were the greatest things around. So shout out to Sam and, um, his wonderful effort in changing that. So yeah, by the end they were sitting in the squad car, they were smiling, and so, it does make a big impact for that. And the friends group pays for all the pizza and pop, so. When you all come in and buy those li- those X library, uh, old library books, that's where it's going, so. Um, we're working on community partnerships, I've partnered with the Hammond Library. We're gonna do a kids artist market in August as part of the farmer's market. So kids will be able to create things, go to the market, sell them. Um, we're only doing art, limited to, only to art, no food. So we're not gonna be wanting to meet those food regulations. And then we're gonna offer a series of how do you, how do you create a business plan? How do you, how do you, um, price those activities? So we're gonna do a little education series around that. Partnering with the School of Forests and the Woodville Library, we're gonna do three summer programs. Um, one is at, actually at the prairie where we are gonna tag monarchs. The other two are in the forest. One has a Native American focus and looking at the Native Americans who live in this area. The other one is the kids are gonna do birds and we're hoping to get somebody in to build the eagle nest and help kids build a big eagle nest, so. Those are some fun things coming up. Class one is done for my permanent license, I have a temporary one right now. So yay me. I passed it, that's even better news, so. And then I just threw out some certain, some numbers for the library for the first four months. So, um, we circulated for, a little over 14,000 items. We had over 19,000 visitors. We've offered 136 programs already this year. 65 new library cards. 820 new materials have been added to the library. And we've had almost 4,000 new visits to the website, so. On the up trend, so that's a good sign, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Rob. Bill Administrator, I'll just find him down at the E D C, the 12th September.
Yep, you know what? Chamber of Commerce, Joey and I attended the meeting last Thursday. It's normally the day after the board meeting, but because of the lateness of our meeting this month, the calendar, so we attended. There was a lot of discussion on different things, but a lot of it on Chili Fest. So the theme that they're looking at is the 80's movies, TV, cartoons. And the format will be pretty much the same as it did previous years. Joey, I don't know if there's any, for that being, I have to say that.
I had a car holding behind the beer trailer this year.
Yeah, Chad, the superintendent, yep. Awesome, so. E D C is continuing to meet monthly. They've formed a couple of groups, including a media group, a government subgroup, governments subgroup, input subgroup. So right now they're still kind of feeling their way along, I guess is the best way to put it. Uh, I am trying to, I do wanna keep an eye on this governance subgroup because there's kind of just broad talk now about reaching out to other communities around us, townships, and I think we're gonna kind of potentially, we could kind of derail some of this. It's gonna get to be too much. And I'm not trying to say that this has to be Baldwin-centric because we all work together, you know, we're part of the county E D C. We work with all the neighboring communities. You know, so that's not the issue, but I think when we start talking about, for instance, Woodville's got an E D C trying to involve them, I, I think some of this is gonna... So I think we're gonna have to keep somewhat of an eye on that a little bit. When the E D C was originally formed in the, say, after, in the late 90's maybe, up through 2016, it was more centric to Baldwin. And I know it kind of just stopped because I think they kind of lost their roadmap of what are we, what are we supposed to do? Because the county does a lot. And so, you know, we're trying to kind of let this group, not that I or the village controls it, but, you know, kind of find their way and develop direction that they might see. You know, marketing can be a big thing, um, housing. Because economic development has changed so much in the last 20 years that it's really gone from being just, we're trying to attract new business and we're trying to work with businesses that are expanding to, now it's all the infrastructure to get that done. we're trying to attract new business and we're trying to work with businesses that are expanding, to now it's all the infrastructure to get that done. And with the way the labor markets are, the way housing is, we're really talking about a lot of different things than we used to. So, you know, we, we wanna see it continue to move forward, and I think there's some very good discussion, but I just don't want it to kind of get to be too much either. We, we gotta kind of focus a little bit here. And obviously, one of the things, and the third thing I put in the agenda was the entrepreneurial venture program, and that's just starting up, and I'm hoping that. I'm gonna go to a, kind of a conference meeting in a couple of weeks in, um, I think it's in Black River Falls. And so we're gonna meet with some other communities that have done this, and right now, we're still basically in the kind of definition stage. You know, they give us the, there's eight steps, which I think are somewhat kind of weird to me, 'cause they talk about trying to define success in the second step. I usually don't do that till later, and then stakeholder mapping, I think, is more of a second step. But ultimately, the idea is to try to cultivate and create an environment to help entrepreneurs and business startups, which is hugely important. So I'm hoping this, as one part of the EDC, kind of takes off in the next few months.
So is this like a sophisticated way to say, we'll give them free money and they'll come here?
No, you know, it really doesn't come down to free money, it comes down to try to help them. These are people that are starting from the ground up, so they need technical support, yeah, funding is part of it. It's trying to steer them to programs that can provide, um, you know, help with them forming a business plan, forming, you know, marketing, forming a lot of the startup things.
So who do you invite to these meetings then?
Well, there's like.
Do you find a startup person around, or, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking, I mean, you guys have a lot of meetings.
Yep, that I don't know yet.
I don't see a lot of progress out of this.
I think it's just the organizational part.
Well, I understand that part, but, you know, is the EDC is an economic development, like.
Right, but we don't want to duplicate what the county's doing. So, and it's really, you know, they're trying to do one step at a time, and it, it's not a, it's not a quick process.
So it's you and Rick and Michelle, is there other people?
Yes, there's, um, um, yeah, the president, um.
Oh, jeez, I don't want you stepping on your boss's toes, no, good. Forgot about the pillar guy.
Oh, shame.
Yeah, the president of Pillar Bank, um, Michelle, it's Michelle, Michelle Erdman.
Steve Gazzle.
Steve, Chad, um, Dale Crawley.
Brad.
Yeah, Chad, Chad Brady for the school board. McMillan, um, yeah. Grant's brother. Yeah, so there's some really good people involved with this, so we don't want to come in and say, okay, we've got the answers, it's the directions you go. I don't believe that's the best way to go, and we want to try to do is just, you know, be a partner in this thing and help steer it and kind of go from there. If it starts going directions that I don't think are good, I'm gonna, you know, say something.
And where the second town goes this program, you know, is there?
Yeah, Amory went through the Amory last year, two years ago.
Which is a state run program.
Yeah, so UW extension, so they're gonna pay for a, and the coordinator was gonna be the county extension, at least community development agent, but she left, so now it's gonna be Michelle, or I mean, Melissa. Melissa from St. Craig County EDC is gonna step in and take that, so I don't know if that's permanent with this, if that's short-term, I'm not really sure. It hasn't cost the village anything yet.
I know it hasn't.
You know, just my time, basically, you know, basically, that's when the ball hits. But I'll keep the board posted on this, because I want your, your ideas and just keep everybody up to speed on this, so.
That's it?
Yes, that's all I have.
Sounds good, I'll take a break before going to a closed session. I just, I just don't understand, I guess, I didn't. Wait, today wasn't the time for you to explain today, it, it's another time like this, this winter, like, all right, dude, we're gonna go out and have some coffee, have some love sticks.
Let's forget base for the long. Meeting remains real quick.
No, nope. We don't need you for it all. That's really good, that's a lot of, all of this. It's basically help, we know what are the needs and wants, that they need to be successful.
Exactly. But we're not trying to reinvent what the county's doing, and that's what's in the bottom.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, I like this, we're trying to look at it really well.
And that's what this was trying to do.
I enjoy the negative, so I, I'm honored for that. Because that's what I brought it to.
Really?
No, I think we gotta start.
Right, and I like that, I like that, I just have to adjust because the system is different from.
So that's why.
Yeah, yeah, using the pre-rem part.
Oh, I can get you, I can get you the house number, that's easy.
Like, it's real. Right through, oh, wait, right forward to Aspen. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. We have the ideas, this is how we're doing.
That's what I mean, but I think if you start to prioritize.
That's syndicate.
It's fine, I'll, I'll just, I, I know, I can get you the house number right now. I can, let me, let me check, um, because it's Michelle Johnson from Hammond. I'll be specific.
And I live on four.